Steve Workman.
Here.
Jason Kyle.
Here.
Dennis Miller.
Here.
Angela Woodward.
Here.
Dan Lawson.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, good evening and welcome everyone to the February 4th meeting of the Ashland City Council. To our viewers at home, thank you for joining us. Members of the audience, members of council, Mayor Miller, welcome. Welcome all. We have a very full agenda this evening. With that, we'll jump right in with the approval of the minutes from the January 21st meeting. I want to thank the council for filling in in my absence. That was a terrible, terrible case of bronchitis. And I appreciate your excusing me in that moment. But if there are no additions, deletions, or corrections to those minutes, I'll ask for a motion to approve as submitted.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Minutes will stand approved. First ordinance this evening will be an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract for the purchase of equipment for the wastewater treatment division of the city of Ashland, Ohio, obviating formal advertising and bidding and declaring an emergency.
Move for non-reading in full.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Okay, tonight, the first item on the agenda relates to the work that we do at the wastewater treatment center. In fact, tonight, we're discussing our jet vac truck. We currently have a 2010 vac truck that we use all throughout the city to maintain our sewer system and our sanitary sewer and san- storm sewer system. 2010, obviously, it's a 15-year-old truck. We've had a number of issues with this truck. In fact, recently, it was down for four to five weeks while we waited for the pump to replace- be replaced on the truck. I talked with our director, who's here tonight, and he shared with me that over the past six years, they've spent more than $52,000 on repairs of this truck. This truck would be used to maintain, like I say, our sanitary and sewer system, clean out our, our wet wells, our sewer lines, our catch basins. I think most of you probably understand what it's used for. And basically, the reason why we're bringing this to you tonight is, as you know, last year, we worked with the Ohio EPA to come up with a remedy to address our overflows at the wastewater treatment center. And one of the components of our strategy to overcome the number of overflows in this community was for us to do a comprehensive inspection of our system and to clean it out wherever needed. And quite honestly, the crew does not believe that this truck can handle that. It's been, as I said, in, in the shop for maintenance a variety of times already. And as we start to embark on this across-the-city upgrade or clean-out of all of our sewer lines, they just simply don't believe that we'll be able to rely on this truck. They are asking, however, that we keep this truck as backup so that if the other one would have issues or so on in the future, we would have one to turn to. But I will tell you, the reason we're bringing it to you today is because, as has been the deal with most all of this big equipment that we've purchased, even if we act today, I believe we believe we wouldn't get the truck till probably closer to December. So it'll take a while to get it here. So with that in mind, we do have the money in our sewer funds and so on. Larry's been able to compile the needed cash for the purchase, and we think it's probably best to place our order if you are willing.
And certainly not cheap.
No. In fact, Larry and I were talking. It seems like all these major trucks we've been purchasing, whether for the fire department, for this division, and actually, I'll soon be coming to you with a proposal to purchase a sanitation truck, although it'll be used. But that's because a new one is over half a million dollars. So it seems like all this equipment runs pretty high.
And this is new, correct?
Yes, this one is brand-new. It'll be a 2025 Aquitet jet vac truck. The estimated cost is $518,000. As you know by the ordinance introduction that you read, this is on the state schedule, so we can obviate bidding. And this is the exact replacement for the truck we have now.
So... I'm assuming Mr. Hunter's in total agreement with this ordinance?
It's, it is, as the mayor said, it's the very same make and model, although new. And it will help, it will permit us to comply with our commitment to the Ohio EPA to do the inspection and the cleaning and subsequent repairs that may be indicated by that. This is something we absolutely have to do. The vehicle that we have now, as the mayor said, will not stand up to the state-of-day activity, but we do want to keep it. We can keep it to use as a backup because when that truck does go off the line, and eventually it will need repairs, it's never a short period of time. It's usually two or three weeks. And to go that long without a back truck is difficult. It's not impossible at times. So that's why we want to keep the older vehicle. And if we have to cannibalize it with parts periodically and then replace those parts, we can, we can. But it'll allow us to have that time limit where we can keep the vehicle on-site and working as frequently as possible.
I see. And you can hold off some of that cleaning until you get the new truck in December?
We're going to do the very best we can. Obviously, this truck is going to continue to have issues. There's no, there's no reason to assume that it will not.
Yeah.
But we'll keep it on the road as frequently as we can. And we will, once we're under, if council approves this, we can at least let Ohio EPA know that we've made this commitment of a half a million dollars practically, or more than a half a million dollars, to comply. And that will go a long way with them.
Sure.
Although that we are serious and that we're going to do this, even though there may be some delays in staying with the schedule that we originally agreed to.
Yeah.
And it doesn't mean we won't do any inspection and cleaning before December.
Limited.
Yes, it won't be as aggressive.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate all you do, Mike, for the, with your, all the resources that you have. So thank you, and this is no-brainer. Appreciate your input and being here.
Yeah.
As well. Yeah. Thank you.
Well, this is one item where we don't have a fleet.
Yeah.
It's one.
Yeah.
We have one back truck.
All right. If there's no further discussion, I'll ask for a motion to approve on the first reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward, Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye. Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Ordinance 5-25.
We all want to approve this one, Mike.
I know. We're jumping over it.
Thanks again.
Thank you, Mike.
Next, we have an ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real property located in the city of Ashland and declaring an emergency.
Move for non-reading in full.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Last week, I was contacted by a representative for a property owner that exists behind our wastewater treatment center. I thought about trying to seek out a photo to put on the screen, but I'll be honest with you, there's no real identifying landmarks around that would give you an idea if you just see this green spot. But basically, what this is, is a triangular-shaped, two-acre property right along US 250, across 250 from ODOT. So if you can picture the District 3 headquarters, US 250, and our wastewater treatment plant, this two acres is immediately behind ODOT, behind our wastewater treatment center. Actually, it's right next to Comtech's as well. It's an odd shape, and I think that we did have a map.
Wastewater or water?
Wastewater. Water and wastewater. Or, I'm sorry, you're right, water.
Yeah, water department.
I'm sorry. Yes, we were just talking about the wastewater.
That makes sense.
But I think there was a map.
Is it attached or contiguous to the?
Yes, yes.
Behind the water plant.
Yeah.
So basically, this is just a triangular shape, two acres of property, that it's right by our lime fields and all that area, that's immediately behind our water treatment plant. And they are asking, 42, well, actually, they asked $50,000 for it. We negotiated with them, and they agreed to come down to 42.5. This is land that we do believe we need because, as we look to the future, if we were to expand or rebuild the plant, it would only make sense that we would have this land. And it is, uh, probably not a lot of use for most folks. Because of the shape that it is and where it's located, but it is of value to us.
Is there a house?
There is not a house, but there is a shed.
Therefore, the address.
And currently, they have to drive through our drive to get to the property.
I see.
Is there any part of it that's wet?
I'm sure there is, but it's with all of our area in there, potentially, yes. So...
That was my...
I thought everyone had a map in your, you didn't have, okay, I'm sorry.
I just printed this one myself.
I don't know how quickly, do we do it?
I use Google Maps to look it up.
I don't know how quick or easy you can. Can you pull up an auditor search? Yeah, you can pass it along, but in case folks wanted to see at home. And if you can't, Amanda, don't worry about it.
It's, it's fine, Amanda. Yeah.
I could screen share on my phone, but...
Nah. Unless you wanted to do it so for the public.
Well, that would be the reason to do it, but it is, it is what it is. Quite honestly, it's, it's of value to us because you have to access it through our property. And the day could come when we have to expand our plant or build a new one. And we would definitely wish then that we had this two acres.
Yeah, we don't want to be locked out.
Exactly.
Somebody else buying it.
Exactly. And quite honestly, we don't want someone to buy it and traffic to increase driving through our footprint.
Right.
Because right now, they literally have to come through next door to our building. Yes.
Yeah.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
So, um, and looking at the auditor site, it seemed a little odd to me that it had a Cleveland Avenue address when it, it's not anywhere near Cleveland Avenue. Did it at one time belong to the city?
It, no, but it would be, our water treatment plant is located on Cleveland Avenue.
It is, but it's quite a ways.
And the drive comes through our property.
Because of the drive.
Yes. So that's where you access the property. But I thought the same thing when I first saw it.
Yeah, it seemed a little strange, so, okay.
But that is the reason, because you access the property off Cleveland Avenue.
All right.
It does have frontage on US 250 if anyone is looking up the property at home. But again, ODOT's likely not going to give you access off that, at that particular spot.
Is the shed usable, or is it?
I mean, I'm sure you could use it, but...
It didn't seem to be.
Chances are, it would probably come down soon. And actually, you know what? I do have pictures of, I, I do have pictures of that because I got the real estate listing.
There you go. You want to see? Yeah, that's a full-fledged barn.
But that's it. There's nothing else on there. It looks like there's a fire pit and a barn and a couple pieces of equipment or something.
Exactly. Did you get it? Yes. I'll get up, thank you, Amanda. I will get up here and point this out for you. Obviously, you can see that this property is part of our city operation all throughout here. And right here is the property we're talking about. This triangle area right here. It's 2.29 acres, I believe. And the way you access it is taking this drive through our property back to that barn and location. So you can clearly see, there's our operation, there's our operation, there's our operation. It makes sense for us to have it in the future. And when you said, will it get wet? The reason I say, well, it could. You can see it's surrounded by it.
That's why I asked it.
Yes.
I'm sure it gets wet.
Honestly, I thought it was ours.
I would have, I would have thought so, too.
So, any further discussion?
Now, normally, we would have went into executive session to discuss this, but this is late-breaking. The representative just came in last week, I believe on Wednesday. I believe that's when I signed, or signed an offer to them. And I believe he brought back a signed agreement on Monday. So I quickly got Terry all the information she needed to put it on the agenda. But otherwise, normally, we would have probably met in executive session to discuss it, but I think it's not real complex.
Nope.
All right. If there's no further discussion, I'll ask for a motion to approve on the first reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye. I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Ordinance 6-25.
And we have an ordinance authorizing and issuing a then-and-now certificate for the following attached expenditures for the city of Ashland, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Move for non-reading in full.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Good evening.
Evening, Larry.
Anytime you change accounting years, there's always something that catches, that carries over from one year to the next. And that's essentially what this is. It was the purchase of equipment for the sanitation department. And in doing it, it falls at the end of one accounting period, and the invoice doesn't come in until the beginning of the next accounting period. So I believe they anticipated it. It just didn't make the cutoff, so.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Paxton? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Again, I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Ordinance 7-25.
Then we have an ordinance authorizing the Director of Finance to execute all paperwork necessary to remove and dispose of a capital asset from the capital asset records of the city of Ashland, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Move for non-reading in full.
Second.
Thank you.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Part of our accounting procedure is that there is a $5,000 cutoff when we're accounting for capital assets of the city. Ordinarily, as they depreciate out, they fall off or fall below that threshold, which then they aren't depreciated off as on our schedules. Unfortunately, this capital asset, this car, was involved in a traffic accident and was totaled. In doing it, the insurance company will reimburse the city $17,000. And more importantly than that, the value of the car on the books at the time of the accident was $12,000. So at this point, why, I, I cannot remove it without your authority. So it's a simple accounting process that I have to go through, and I'd appreciate it if you approved this.
Certainly. Questions? Is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Ordinance 8-25.
Then we have an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Ashland, Ohio, to enter into a contract with the Fraternal Order of Police, police clerks, and declaring an emergency.
Move for non-reading in full.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
All right. The next three items deal with our contracts with our unions. So the first one here that we're going to talk about is the police clerk contract. This impacts six employees down at our city police department. And basically, what we have found, and we knew this without even the union bringing it to our attention, these are fairly low-paid positions. And when you take a look at what our competition is paying, and I'll be honest with you, our competition could even be some of our local fast-food restaurants and others, we were paying less per hour for our police clerks than what they could have received working for some of our other establishments nearby. So as we entered this negotiation, we were certainly hoping to adjusting the start rate. And that is the particular item that has been negotiated this time. Just let me preface this. Most all of these contracts and these ordinances that we're about to discuss, they basically came down to the financials in terms of, there weren't a lot of benefits added. There weren't a lot of extra fringes that were added. It all came down to what the annual salary increase would be and what the hourly wage would be. So when it comes to the police clerks, what we have negotiated, a new start rate of $15.60 an hour, which I think you would probably suspect that that would be right in line with what they're already making. But believe it or not, it isn't. But the new rate would be 15.60. And it would, we would agree to, in addition to this $15.60 starting rate, all of our current six police clerks would get a $2-hour adjustment, and then a 5% increase for this year, a 4% increase for next year, and a 4% for 2027. So basically, in these three contracts that we're about to discuss, this year, we did negotiate an equity adjustment. So you're going to hear in each of these conversations that we, we raise the start rate so that we can attract new people to these positions because it's been a struggle to fill spots here at our fire department, at our police department. And so we gave an equity adjustment to basically make us more competitive with what other entities are paying in our region that are our size. And of course, then we figured in what the annual increase would be. So those are the numbers that are changing, and that's what I'm asking you to approve today. The union has already agreed to this, so a new starting wage of $15.60 an hour for our police clerks. And then all those six individuals who currently occupy these jobs, we've got one that's as new as six months, one who's been here 24 years. They will get a $2-an-hour increase, and then a 5% cost-of-living adjustment for '25, '26, a 24%, and '27, a 4%.
Very good.
Yes.
It says all employees excluding those hired in 2018.
Well, let me tell you, we, we discussed that. And here's what that boils down to. We do not know why in 2018 that language was put in there. But at this point, we're reluctant to take it out because we don't know why it was in there. No one is around who was here at that time. Oh, I guess I was. We were here.
Yeah.
But we cannot figure out what that, why that would be in there, what that even applies to. Larry, he asked the same question. We were trying to figure out, but it's been in there. Chad was not here when that was negotiated, and so...
Do we have employees from, that were hired in 2018?
There must have been at that point.
But we don't currently have.
No.
Although that would make sense.
Yeah, it would.
And I would love to give you a better explanation. Larry, did we not just have this explanation?
Up to ours.
That's right. We don't know. Believe me, I almost said, strike it. But I'm scared to do that because I don't know why it was in there in the first place.
I'll accept Mrs. Woodward's speculation. Let's put it that way.
Yes. Okay.
I don't know what else would apply, so. Very good.
Well, and I'm sorry, because that is not a good explanation, but I do not know.
Okay.
Chad, our HR director, did not know. I don't know that Larry, did you know what? Didn't sound like you did either.
I, I researched it. I, I, there had to be something in the previous contract that maybe was negotiated that brought that out, but I couldn't find it.
That was my only question.
Or it could be a significant typo. I don't know. I don't know.
Just seemed a little odd.
All right.
It might be one of those cases where we need to take it out just to figure out what impacted, did it have any impact?
Hey, wait a minute.
Yes.
See if there's any outcry.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Speaking of typos, and I don't know if this is, and it's probably not going to make a shred of difference.
Yes.
But on page eight at the top, "All employees shall earn sick leave at the rate of 4 and 6 tenths for every 80 hours." Four and 6 tenths what?
Hours.
It doesn't say that. It just says 4 and 6 cents.
But that is the, the rule.
Oh, yeah.
If you work 80 hours and you are not absent or sick, you earn 4.6 hours of sick leave per pay period.
And just for the record, that is not a change. So he's asking if that's a typo, but that, that has been that way. That is not a change.
Yeah, and it's set within all of them. Four and 6 tenths.
Exactly.
Four and 6 tenths what? It's assumed it's 4 and 6 tenths hours for every 80 hours. But it does not specify 4 and 6 tenths hours. Is it 4 and 6 tenths days? Is it 4 and 6 tenths weeks?
I assure you, it's hours.
Well, and it says 4 and 6 tenths for every 80 hours worked. Well, and it says four and six tenths for every eighty hours worked.
Four and six tenths, so what?
Yeah, so I think...
It flows through the ages.
Yeah.
Of hours. But thank you for pointing that out, Dan.
Right. So that's the significant change there. Five, four, four would be the actual cost of living increase.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Ordinance nine dash twenty-five.
Then we have an ordinance authorizing the Mayor of the City of Ashland, Ohio, to enter into a contract with the International Association of Firefighters, Local 1386 AFL-CIO, and declaring an emergency.
Move for non-reading in full.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Okay, now these next two contracts, this is fire, the next one is police. In these negotiations, we had a long discussion about equity. And by that, I mean, how do our starting wages compare to other agencies in our region or our size? And if you've paid attention to news headlines, there are many of our surrounding communities who have given significant adjustments in these recent contract negotiations. And by significant, I mean upward of nine, or nineteen, or 20%. I mean, it's, it's been very significant, because everyone is struggling to recruit folks, and no one wants to be the one that pays the least. Well, with that in mind, we understand that that is a factor. So in our negotiations of this three-year contract, we agreed to a 3% equity adjustment in 2025 for our firefighters and paramedics, a 3% equity adjustment, and a 4% cost of living adjustment for a total of 7% here in 2025. You will notice, if you read through your materials, what is unique is, in this negotiation, because we couldn't reach a consensus or agreement on what that cost of living increase would be in '26 and '27, we decided that we would agree to reopen negotiations at the end of this year. In other words, as the fall months roll around and we get closer to maybe October and November and so on, we're going to have a better idea of how the local economy has done, what financial state the city is in. Are income tax collections up? Are they on par? Are they decreasing? And then at that time, we feel we'll be better suited to have a conversation about what the cost of living adjustment should be for '26, and then we'll do the same at '26 for '27. And if you read the memo memorandum of agreement that is in the front of the paperwork you received, basically, that's what it outlines, is that this coming fall, we will open up negotiations, but we will only be negotiating the cost of living adjustment. In other words, determining what percentage increase will apply for 2026. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So we've agreed to a 3% equity in 2025 that'll be retroactive to January 1st pay period of this year, and a 4% cost of living.
And it's only, the contract in '26 and '27 is only reopened for discussion of wages.
That's exactly right.
Nothing else is being bargained for.
Exactly. And the unions have agreed to that as well.
Okay.
So we, I'll be honest with you, both the negotiations with the fire and with the police did go smoothly. It was nothing volatile or anything like that, but I think we all just determined we weren't in a position to agree to a significant increase in 2026, not knowing what our finances would look like. Because if you have been following this past year, while, I'll be back up, because now I'm talking a whole bunch of years. So '23, we had a significant increase in our income tax collections, but then last year, kind of leveled off. We did have a slight increase, but it wasn't as much as we had the previous year. And we're all hoping we have a golden year this year, but we won't know until we get through the months ahead, so.
I guess I'm curious as to what thresholds we're going to be looking at when the time comes? And do we have a baseline established and then a, a threshold to surpass, to justify an increase later on? Not that we wouldn't, but I think Larry probably has an idea, or you yourself, Mayor, based on what our appropriations are and our projected revenue is. And that's a yes or no question.
We do know what our...
You have an idea.
We know what our projected revenue is, but things like, what if our health expenses, health insurance costs go up dramatically at renewal time?
Exactly.
And we're looking at that, because that has not been out of the question the last several years.
So it's quite a variable.
Yes, so it is, yes. And we, I guess you're asking for a baseline from the budget perspective. When you said that, what I'm thinking is, we know what the union has proposed, and we know what we feel is fair.
Thank you.
And we just think we'll both be in a better position to reach an agreement at the end of this year.
Very good.
Rather than trying to do so right now. And if you notice, what does it say? Basically, if we can't reach an agreement, then it goes to a mediator and they'll decide. So.
Very good. Any other questions?
Now, just out of fairness, let me say, there were a few other things that were tweaked. We did make the firefighters readiness bonus match that of the police, and we did also increase the uniform allowance by, I believe it was 300 in this contract, but those were fairly minor adjustments. And we think that's fair, because let's face it, costs have gone up, and so chances are, it does cost more to purchase your uniform.
Inflation, sure.
Yep.
All right, if there's no further discussion, is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Ordinance ten dash twenty-five.
Then we have an ordinance authorizing the Mayor of the City of Ashland, Ohio, to enter into a contract with the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association. This will be the patrolmen, sergeant, and lieutenants, and declaring an emergency.
Move for non-reading in full.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Same situation. A 7% increase for 2025, a 3% equity adjustment, a 4% cost of living adjustment, and then we will reopen negotiations later this year.
Good. If there are no questions, is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Ordinance eleven dash twenty-five.
Item H will be an ordinance establishing limits for wages and determining other provisions relative to positions of employment of classified supervisory personnel for areas not included in another wage or salary ordinance in the City of Ashland, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Move for non-reading in full.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
All right, now, the items on your agenda, beginning with H, I, J, K, and L, are all going to sound very similar, but these are the ordinances that govern the benefits and the wages and other fringes for our non-union employees. Everyone understand that? I know you've all been through it. The major change, I would say, this year is, you may or may not know, but currently, if you are a classified employee or you are one of the ordinance employees, if we hire you today, you will not necessarily qualify for vacation for one year. And it'll be prorated at best, and that has become quite an issue when it comes time to recruit and hire for these positions, because there's not many folks that don't have a vacation or need some time off in that first year of employment. And so what we're asking to do is to change the language so that a supervisor or hiring supervisor could offer a new recruit or a new employee up to two weeks of vacation during their first year of employment. Basically, it's going to be an incentive for someone to join the team. We may not always be able to pay the highest wage, but certainly, we can hopefully help in this regard. Also, one of the things that we've discovered is, currently, you have to have worked for the city for 30 days before you can get paid for a holiday. So for example, if someone's hired 29 days before, or works 29 days before Martin Luther King Day, when Martin Luther King Day comes, they have a shortened paycheck because they don't qualify for the holiday pay. And we'd like to correct that, so that if you, if you're working here and Christmas comes, you get paid, even if it's within your first 30 days.
Sure. Or hired after 2018.
The reality is, in most instances, folks are...
Just joking.
Or in 2018.
Let's be honest, most people are working pretty close to paycheck to paycheck. Someone can argue that's right or wrong, or manag, good management, bad management, but that is reality. And so these issues do matter.
Sure.
A short paycheck a day makes a difference.
Sure.
And these aren't terribly high-paying jobs that we're discussing under these ordinances, so we think these are worth our time to adjust.
And offering vacation time in the first year is a typical hiring practice as well, so.
Then the, the other thing that I would mention in this, the other change that is somewhat significant, I would say, is back on page nine. It outlines the table of organization for our police and fire. And currently, we have authorized that we can have 27 firefighters at our fire department and 21 police officers. And tonight, I am proposing, and you will have to make that change manually, because I see no one highlighted it, but I'm asking you to increase those numbers by three for each division. That does not mean that tomorrow, they go hire three additional. It could mean that, but they still have to be authorized. But this will allow them to hire up to, in the case of the police officers, 24, in the case of firefighters, 30. And the reality is, so you ask why? Well, I think you probably can understand why. You understand the overtime that both agencies are facing, and you also see the growth that is happening. And there are more calls in both divisions. And so as we look to the future and this additional housing that we're expecting and anticipating to start this year, this is basically setting the stage for us to be able to accommodate it. Because let's face it, one of the reasons people are moving here and doing business here in this case is because we're safe. And the way we're going to continue to remain safe is by having patrolmen out there, officers out there in the field, protecting our neighborhoods.
Growing pains, good problems.
Yes, absolutely.
Did you want to add anything?
Nope, those are the two major changes.
Questions?
Yeah.
Discussion? Yes.
I do have a question. If you were to compare the last contract that we approved for the police division, for the patrolmen and officers, and then you compare that to what their supervisors make, which is a salary versus hourly, assuming that they all work roughly 40 hours a week, there's a significant discrepancy between what the supervisor makes being much less than what the higher-end officer makes. A lieutenant to a captain, let's say, or a lieutenant to a chief. Okay?
Yes.
Okay?
Yep.
All right.
Does that answer your question?
Just clarify that that's not something that slipped through.
No. No, there could be, and I will tell you, with these changes, there will have to be some other adjustments to leadership. Because we'll actually have, and I don't want to name positions, but we'll have one position where they will be making more significant more than chief.
Right. Okay.
So we are having those conversations.
Good.
Yes.
Yeah, that I can lead the issues down the road.
Yes.
Okay.
There's no further discussion, is there a motion to approve item H on the first reading?
President Workman, before doing the usual round of voting, why don't you do a roll call vote just on amending it to the twenty-four from the twenty-one? I think that's probably wise.
All right. On page nine.
Yeah.
All right. So it's been advised that we do a roll call vote for the amendment of the ordinance, uh, H, simply H or for all?
No, just this one.
Just this one.
Just this one.
Uh, from making the change from twenty-one to twenty-four and thirty to thirty-
Twenty-seven to thirty.
Twenty-seven to thirty.
Yes.
Not thirty-three.
Yes, no, you're right.
Twenty-one to twenty-four and twenty-seven to thirty, as we had manually written prior to the meeting.
Does that make sense what we're doing? Yes. And let me just say for those that are watching, the reason we have to do this is because the print version, that number was not changed. Twenty-one officers was not changed to twenty-four officers. So that's why they are amending it because the print version doesn't show that. Now, the fires division does show the three additional firefighters, but the police does not. So that's why they're doing this.
So do we need to amend both or just the police?
No, the fires correct, the police just don't have their number in there.
So Terry, if you would take the role on the amendment?
Do we have to do a motion?
So moved, so moved. Oh, to adjust the police officers from twenty-one to twenty-four.
Thank you, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, thank you.
So with that change or that amended change, is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
All right, again, we'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Ordinance twelve dash twenty-five.
Then we have an ordinance establishing wages and other compensations for administrative employees exempted from the Fair Labor Standards Act of the City of Ashland, Ohio and declaring an emergency.
Move for nonreading in full.
Second.
Thank you.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
So in this particular ordinance, I was going to say contract, but it's not a contract. In this particular ordinance, evidently in two thousand twenty-two, when we last acted on these ordinances on page four, it says each employee at the time of retirement from active service with the city and with ten or more years of service with the city, excuse me, may elect to be paid in cash for one-fourth of the value of his accrued unused sickly credit. Okay? Well, apparently, that had always said, let me make sure I'm saying this right. It had said and had been one-third. And what we believe happened is, this is a typo where someone put the wrong figure in. And so this is what it had been, but evidently the last time that we approved this, it said one-fourth and it was supposed to say one-third. And it was brought to our attention by someone who will be impacted by it. And basically, what it amounts to is chances are, the last time that it was typed and people were cutting and pasting sections, they probably just did the wrong thing. And they brought it to my attention and said that they did go back and they showed me proof that it had been. No one ever consciously made that decision since I've been here, but it had been previously one-third. So that's the only change. So I'm not going to make excuses for everyone or myself, but I will tell you, there is a lot of paperwork when it comes to all these ordinances as you see, and they're so similar and yet so different that I understand it would been easy for someone to do that.
And that change has been stricken and inserted.
Yes.
So no manual change needed. Questions?
The only thing, it, uh, page two, they can get three weeks of a vacation immediately. So can they work one day and then take three weeks of vacation?
Yes, but I doubt their boss would approve it.
Okay.
You know, that's right. And yeah, these are for all the director positions.
Yeah.
And their boss would be the mayor. And, uh-
For the record.
Just so you know, even though he brought up that vacation, that that is not a change. That is the way it has been, three weeks. He's bringing up the three weeks, but that is the only change in this section is the one-fourth to one-third unused buyout for their sickly. So just don't want anyone to think we're giving more vacation to our directors because we're not.
Good question. Any further discussion? Is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Jason, you look like you had a question.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay.
Let's go. Let's go.
With that, then I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Thirteen dash twenty-five.
Then we have an ordinance establishing wages and determining other provisions of employment for areas not included in another wage or salary ordinance in the City of Ashland, Ohio and declaring an emergency.
Move for nonreading in full. Second.
Thank you.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
As we've already pointed out, each of these ordinances impacts a different group of people that are not in the union that work for the city. This particular ordinance deals with everyone from school crossing guards to mini golf course workers to swimming pool groundskeepers to intermittent labors, even golf course employees. First off, let me just say, once again, for many of these positions, we do not allow any vacation the first year they work for the city. We're changing that or asking you to change it, just as what I've previously stated for all these other ordinances. The real changes that I draw your attention to in this one is we're going to pay, if you agree with it, we're going to pay our school crossing guards a little bit more. Currently, they make twenty-one dollars a day. As a result, we cannot find them.
Yeah.
Because they have to come in the morning and they have to come in the afternoon, and people just aren't willing to do it. And so we are proposing increasing it to fifty dollars a day. And that is what we're proposing. The police chief believes that that should make it a little bit easier to find someone, but we're not necessarily thinking we'll have a long line. But fifty dollars a day is what we're asking to change their daily rate to, from twenty-one to fifty dollars a day. And then, second of all, the thing that is significant in this one that's changing is we're adding language to outline the terms of employment for our pollu- police recruits. So I think most of you know that we've started utilizing the police recruit program. And basically, what it allows us to do is to bring on, in many instances, a young officer that may, or they're not officers yet, but bring on a young employee who meets all of our requirements to be a police officer for our city, but they ha- don't have their license and haven't graduated from the academy. They can go ahead and come to work for us, ride along in the cars, they can be a full-time employer, be one of our employees. But this now puts in the ordinance the terms of their employment. And I don't think there's anything juicy about that. You can probably see the highlighted areas, but now they're included in the chart. So, and ju- if anyone's interested, their minimum a- minimum hourly wage would be twenty dollars an hour.
Mayor, what is the responsibility of time for the school crossing guard?
That's a great question. I was told that it's twice a day they have to be available in the morning and in the afternoon. So I, I guess that's probably any school, given school day.
I just didn't know if you knew, like, do they have to be there at two, two-thirty to-
Oh, I don't know, I don't know.
Three-thirty or what they're hourly, what, how many hours?
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Oh, that's okay, I was just curious.
We can get you that very easily, but-
Just curious.
I would say probably close to an hour.
Okay.
Hour each?
We've covered those and-
Okay.
I would say, yeah, it's probably at least an hour at least.
Okay, thank you.
And do you know what time they have to be in place? Yes, I don't either.
Thank you.
Nope, good question.
Until reading this, I frankly had no idea, I thought they were school employees.
Yes, yes.
But a lot of people do, yeah.
Yes.
But I'm sure there's formal training that goes along with that position.
I think, yes, I think, uh, you kind of want to argue that.
Sure, yeah. Valued, uh, employees for sure, got a lot of responsibility there. I'm assuming that would fall under traffic safety, so it does make sense.
Yes.
They would be sitting employees.
Yes.
That's my discussion. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Again, I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Ordinance fourteen dash twenty-five.
Starting to lose my place. Okay, okay, without a K. Next, we have an ordinance establishing limits for wages and determining other provisions relative to positions of employment of unclassified administrative support staff, to division directors and elected officials in the City of Ashland, Ohio and declaring an emergency.
Move for nonreading in full.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
K and L on your agenda, both of these ordinances, the only change is folks would now, when we recruit new people for these positions, they would be eligible for vacation immediately after they're hired. So this is, that's the only change. This one and the next ordinance.
Very good. If there's no discussion, I'll ask for a motion to approve on the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Again, I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Mayor, I just want to mention too that they will also get paid-
Holiday.
Holidays, just clarify that.
Nope, that's good.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Ordinance fifteen dash twenty-five.
And finally, we have an ordinance establishing limits and wages and determining other provisions relative to employment of unclassified administrative su- support staff, wages to division directors and elected officials in the City of Ashland, Ohio and declaring an emergency.
Move for nonreading in full.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
And as I mentioned, it's the same parameters.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
First reading. Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye. Again, I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Again, second.
Thank you.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Ordinance sixteen dash twenty-five.
All right. Moving to resolutions.
I just wanted to say, based upon the questions, it should be obvious that this council has read these documents very, very thoroughly.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
We don't take this responsibility lightly.
No.
And we want to make sure that we do due diligence to the work that we're doing.
Thank you. Moving to resolutions, then we have a resolution regarding services to be provided to territory to be annexed into the City of Ashland, Ohio and declaring an emergency.
Move for nonreading in full. Second.
Thank you.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
This legislation, this resolution relates to the properties that the city acquired out on US two fifty adjacent to Wells Road. So basically, start at Wells Road, out by the industrial park, and all of the properties, beginning with what many would identify as the old saloon. And then the, there's now no longer any homes there, but we removed those homes, all the properties up to the Weber property. The Weber property, where the, a lot of people refer to it often as the petting zoo because there's a lot of animals and animal habitats out there. That is the only property now there along the industrial park that the city does not own. And as you know, this past year, we were working through the annexation of those parcels since the city owns them. And tonight, this resolution, if you authorize it, will basically say the City of Ashland will provide water, salute, sewer, police and fire services as well as sanitation services for these properties. We own them, so.
Do we provide sanitary sewer, et cetera, for out on the other side of the street to include Harris Welding?
Only if it's annexed, and I don't believe it is.
It is not.
Is it? I don't believe it's in the city.
Just curious. Thank you. With that, any discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the resolution on the first reading?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Resolution one dash twenty-five.
We have another resolution, this will be a resolution declaring council's intention to vacate a certain alley located in the City of Ashland, Ohio.
Move for nonreading in full.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
All right, tonight, we'll draw your attention to the screen. This is Eastern Avenue, this is Banning Avenue, and you can see right here, the section that is designated in blue is currently designated as an alley for the City of Ashland. However, it is not an alley. In fact, it is a driveway between six oh six and six twelve on Eastern Avenue that buildings almost obstruct when you get back so far. I would have to step away or look closer, I guess, at the map, but I think it's back here. And basically, it's just a shared driveway between these two properties. The reason this has come to our agenda tonight is because one of the property owners, I believe, is preparing to sell, and this is becoming an issue, not an issue that they have with their neighbors, but in the process of the sale, there's a lot of questions about, wait a second, that says this is an alley? When, if you were to drive out there, maybe you already have. It is certainly not for public use. It is a driveway for both of those properties. And as you know, as we've said in previous meetings, that when we bring these alley vacations before the council, it's because we've determined that it no longer serves a public use. And tonight, we just introduce it to you and ask you to consider it, and if you'd like to consider it, the first step, of course, is to set a public hearing.
All right. That other section, that's already vacated, correct?
Yes. Yes, and I could have pointed that out.
Below the number ten there?
Exactly. This previously was part of what was considered this public alley, and it's already been vacated. So right now, this is the alley to nowhere. Yes?
And this map doesn't show any utilities or anything like that that we would have to easements for.
I'm assuming that, were you finished, Dan?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm assuming the process will be the same, we'll send out letters to neighbors and et cetera.
Yeah, and there's two.
Yeah.
So we've already got one, so we only have one that we need to notify.
All right.
Yes.
If there's no further discussion, I'll ask for a motion to approve on the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
Aye. Lawson.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
I'm wondering if there's pertinent information to be shared. Is there pertinent information to be shared?
No, no.
Okay, very good. With that, then, we'll need to set a hearing date for three eighteen twenty-five at seven ten, if that meets with council's approval. I'll ask for a motion to approve on the first, where are we, Terry?
Suspend.
I'm sorry. Okay, so the hearing date will be set for three eighteen. I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.